Good or bad, okay? The financial planning tool.
Okay, we're looking at revision 0.08. Changes since we last met. There's been information that's coming on the recreation fund. And also some new information for accrued benefits. And I think then we get to the main topic of just town buildings. So this is the information that I received Wednesday from Recreation Commission. Two items removed from last year. Three items. One for 2023, one for 2024, one for 2025. That's as far as it goes. It shows that if that was to be funded, the required deposit would be a little over $19,000 a year for the next three years. And that is if we keep the end-of-year margin minimum at $5,000. Using the 10%, none of the annual expenditures are more than $50,000. So it's the $5,000 minimum that's controlling. So you can see that it's $5,000 is kept in each year. And 2026, there's still $5,000 there and nothing planned after 2025.
Do you have anything from them to back up these numbers in terms of quotes? It doesn't look like it.
I know. This one here that centered his market research, I was told part of it was, and part of it was just a guess. So I don't know the breakdown there. And then these others, I was told was an educated guess, and he claimed yes.
Recreation is a warrant article, right? The wage should still expend?
Correct.
So unless they have something to bring to the voters from March, that thing in number one is not going to happen. That's why I was asking in terms of a quote.
They're still, they had a partial one. They don't know.
This is something.
This is documentation that covers two thirds of it or 90% of it.
Sounds like good news. Good news?
Sorry, I'm so sorry. This is first race coach. Okay, now I can focus.
Focus. So John just going over the changes in the states.
I was part of the group that made the changes.
So one of the questions was, do the, it says market research in terms of estimates. So the thing is, there's no way to expend on this fund. So if the Recreation Commission is going to bring a warrant article, they have to spend it in 2023. So do you have any more information? Where would they put it? Is that like a solid number or is that?
It's not a solid number. It was an estimate based on new information and including the fence, I guess, that we need to be there. And it was, I looked into it to give a basic idea. It would basically just be where the current one is. And I guess you talked to Steve about how there'd be a tree that has to come down. And then it would be bought out.
Is it a regulation? Is it, what is it size-wise? And how is that going to affect? We just said that they could put up the ice rink. So is it, how is that going to work?
So it wouldn't change anything right now. And then next year, when it went in, then it would make the ice rink much better. Because it would be flatter, it would be a much better surface. Plus you'd increase your pickleball, which is the most used thing at whatever, as far as I know. So because you could use, it would be a tennis and pickleball court.
Oh, so you have two of them.
Right, and then it could also be used for like aerobics or different things like that. If we decided, there's a lot of different things that could be, it could now be used because it's a flat new surface.
So it'd be up to the town field. Which brings up, if you're going to have people there, where are they going to park?
Right, so when we looked at that, Steve said that there was a way you could do the parking like we did with the skating rink. And then there's the last way. If it gets, you know, enlarged up there.
And anything else on the other two?
Those are really fillers just to figure out, to make sure that we're saving. Because those things are coming up. We don't have a number. And of course, we could choose, you know, a different number. But it's really just an idea. The picture is what somebody had said, you know, so people could enjoy.
What's the equipment at $30,000 for the playground? What is that?
So it's, the playground equipment gets old and needs to be replaced.
Well, are we talking about a swing set? I mean, what?
And that's the thing, you can decide. So if you, if you, if the slipboard says, you know, we're only going to replace what's already there, or we don't want that, whatever. I think that's a very flexible number based on, you know, what priorities that is. That's just basically a placeholder. Because the concern was if we don't put anything in there, then we don't think about saving money. And we know we have to replace what we have. And then we can decide what, so we could decide how you want to do that.
Okay, all right. All right, and the other one, Mr. John, accrued benefits?
The other one is accrued benefits. A big new number here is the cost this year. This is the sum of what the town has already paid to date. Plus one half of what has been the average for the last 15 years. And that average for the last 15 years, the nominal amount has varied all over the map from 0 to $49,000. I took those numbers and brought them forward by what we found the annual increase in wage and salaries to be, which is down here, was based on 2010, what our total was, 2020, what our total was. And that is an annual increase of 3.67% per annum. So using that increase, took these historical nominal numbers, brought them forward to what it would be today with that annual cost increase. And then the average of that is this 15, 784. And since we're practically halfway through the year, I just took half of that amount and added on to what we've already spent. And that's where this 53, 620 comes from.
Can I just ask you a question? At what point in that last graph did we change the way we did contracts? Does that affect anything?
That's a good question.
It affects your payout.
Right, so those, those big numbers down in 2000.
I don't know the answer to that in terms of those two. I don't know what that is in 2012, 13 and 14.
So that's not somebody that left that had a big payout at the end?
The only person we had that had a big one left just recently, so.
Right, but I mean, when we're looking at the average, are we going to have that again in the future now that we no longer have that option? Should we, should we make the 10-year average to the 15?
The other issue I have, John, could you close this and go back through it? The issue I have is because in terms of the end-of-year balances up there, the last information I had from Andy, and I don't know if this has changed, our total limit, and if everybody left, was just a little bit under $35,000. So why are we, why are we carrying so much money when, you know? And I understand there's things that go forward. Salary is going to increase, so we have to increase the sum. But right now, like 2022, even if everybody left, we only have to pay out $35,000. And we're showing a balance of 39, so.
So I think we're using math from before when we had a different amount possible. And now that that's changed, maybe we have to just use the most recent years? Because it's no longer an option at this time?
Yes, well, they're not going to grow, but they just do because.
You can't.
Yeah.
So that's just something to be aware of.
If you want to see what is the averages in the recent years. So this number here is the average for two years. This is the average for three years. This is the average for the four years and so forth.
And do we know when that year changed that we no longer have that? Because I'm looking.
I don't actually know. And because you don't, when you change policy, you don't, you don't change on those employees that are already grandfathered in, that came in under a different policy.
Right, but those are all gone now.
You would have to actually look at that in more detail than just what's happened over the last X number of years.
So the people that were grandfathered in are no longer grandfathered in, correct? So if we look instead of, because it's pretty much 20,000 down here and then up there is more 10. So it makes more sense to go with what could actually happen now than the full median for all this year. So if we change that from 15 to 10, I think we'd be better off.
So looking at this number here and saying we're expecting it to be, let's say, going forward in today's cost, it's $10,000.
Depending on how far it goes out.
Yeah, exactly. And then that will just help those numbers. Look at that kind of cost. Do you mind the record?
It doesn't always work.
It doesn't. There are made-up numbers, it's a hundred percent.
So now it's 12, 8.
So that makes more sense because then in three years, you have enough to cover the whole staff.
Well, you can cover the whole staff now. And the balance is 39 and the lab military is only 35. So you're $4,000 over. And nobody, everybody's not going to leave all at once. So that's worst case, so. One person will stay. How about that?
That one person, I hear, but yes, all right, great. That looks better, thank you.
Okay, back to the tough nut. Unless you've got something else that tweets.
Well, two things. The interest rates that we've been using, those were all set before the recent inflation situation that we're in now. And that means that for purchases that are next year or a year beyond, I mean, right now, just the inflation part of the annual cost increases is actually more than any of the annual cost increases that we're counting on. The other thing is that so far, no overrides have been put in. So it's expected that in all cases, you would put in an override. Because if you look at someone like number, you're not going to do a warrant article for 77,000.
All right, so we'll get there.
So this is the main topic.
If inflation continues the way it is, wouldn't it make sense that eventually savings rates would go up? So that the money we're saving would also change the way they do things? So that, so we're spending more with inflation, but we're saving more with the savings that we're making?
Yes, eventually interest rates would go up.
Okay, so maybe they'll balance a little bit. Even though our numbers are perfect, they might find a balance, okay.
Right, this, we're using just two interest rates. So we're using the interest rate that we're expecting to earn this current fiscal year. So that's very well known. And then a rate for all future years. And of course, that's.
It's very low, though.
Yes, it's very low. We know it's going to be very low next year. But the year after, year after, you know, because 15 or 10, 20 years from now, we have no idea.
I'm just saying, I guess, so that our concern about inflation with the cost might have some balance somewhere.
You revisit this every year, so this gets recalculated every year.
And the open market committee said in the next two years, they're going to have five to seven increases. So, but no way you're going to get to like the 6% and 7%. You're probably being the twos or something like that, maybe. So you're still.
Yeah, I mean, even the last time when it went up, it was kind of down long before COVID hit.
And of course, inflation is going to be up and the banks are going to be hesitant to increase their. They're not going to do it.
But some of the inflation that we're seeing is due to post-pandemic. Some of it is to stay and some of it is going to, that's a natural curve after.
Supply chain issues, and you've got human resources issues. You've got people, not enough people in the workforce, so you have to increase wages to keep your people. So familiar, yeah.
Are we living that life? Yes.
All right, big nut.
Did we get, I want to go to that first column. I'm looking at the fire department, fire suppression system for 200,000. I was wondering, do we have that in writing? And what is it? I know what the system is, but what kind is it?
Well, yeah, and speaking, Andy has something for you for line 16.
I'm sorry?
Andy has something for you, John, for line 16.
Yes, Scott gave us.
The ventilation system?
Right, and he's got a good quote estimate at this point of $67,120.
So yes, 19 we don't have. That's based on a 2010 estimate.
And Scott is in the process of attempting to get an exact fire suppression number. He just hasn't been able to extract it.
I was interested in knowing what kind it was. So when we get to, when we get closer, I guess. But I'd still like to see us look at a real fire suppression system. I know Scott mentioned somebody told him that the foam was poisonous or something. That's not true. The foam today, it's mandated, is called FFF. It's fluorine-free foam. Any foam before that, which is already in systems or whatever, yes, the fluorine has given a problem with cancer, et cetera, et cetera. But the new systems are clean.
Is it possible for us to discuss the fact that that might come, that number might come out? Because we're ready to decide about ARPA. Yeah, so that that's not part of this whole plan if we're going to.
Well, one of the things I asked Andy to do, which I believe he has, is numbers that we have for the ARPA monies that we have right now. So because it's only going to, those monies are only going to go so far, so.
Right, but that's one of the things I think we've all three talked about putting as one of the priorities. So getting it off the grid.
Your total for ARPA money that we received, and this was when August, is $239,163.50. And so far, we have given a green light for the Conservation Commission to use up to $7,500 for trail work. And the non-first responder stipends we did actually came in lower than I estimated. They came in at $47,544. The reason they came in lower was we followed the letter of the law that was used for the responder program. So if you had paid time off during that period, you were reduced by that amount, so.
So in that case, then, our total left, what's the number we still can spend?
So that would be 239 subtract 54. Give me a minute, I didn't break a calculator.
Look at him, he's so good, I love it.
And that 47 was for the remaining part of this fiscal year? Or what was that 47?
The 47, 544 was what it cost us to do those stipends for non-first responders.
But the period.
That was from May through July, May 5th through July 19.
The same ones that the police have hired.
We replicated the fire and rescue, the fire and police program, exactly. Which we felt was important to do because you may have read the paper in the last few days. McHuen gave everybody a stipend with no distinction between people that stayed at home, people that were in danger. And they've been ordered to return $651,000.
Wow, $651,000.
The worst part of that was in October, they hired Melanson and Heath because they thought the ARPA details were too hard to negotiate. So they hired Melanson to manage their ARPA spending for them. And this is the first that Melanson got the dick taken.
And that is why you do your own work. All right, so that leaves us with 186,000. Which if we take out 67.
And you're going to see another payment of ARPA funding too.
So is that possible? So that when we're doing these totals, those aren't involved?
Can we discuss the rest of them? Because the thing is, that's important. But is there anything else that's just as important or more important? I think it's important for us to go through this list and triage what we're going to, you know, put in that particular bucket of funding or not. So I don't really want to start. If we want to just go down the list or whatever, I don't know. So we have to start, is this 1 through 22, is that all of it, John? Is there any other than that? Whoa, jeez, freaking me out again.
No, that's not all.
So it's got like, how many do we got? 30 something?
39.
All right.
A lot of 2022s there.
So. What is it, do I?
That's not a good sign.
When John says.
When John's worried, we're all in trouble.
So can we maybe set up like pools of, you know, this is something we want to fund with ARPA, this is something we want to fund, and this is something we need to wait or something like that, something like that? I don't know.
Because the rest of the questions will be answered once we know more specifics. And I think things related to health, we should decide quickly and get started on.
Health and safety.
Thank you.
So maybe what we can do? You good?
No, I'm not.
No, good, okay.
Why don't we keep, we'll let him do the fixing of that.
Well, I want to see the list, so he's.
I have the list printed out, I can give it for you. I printed it because you know I'm a levite, but once in a while that comes in.
One of the things I was going to ask, John, John, can you cut and paste like, like the first like three columns or something like that? And then we can do it in a spreadsheet outside of the financial planning tool? So we can like put it in categories? Because I don't see any place where we could put categories here, maybe.
Sure.
I have one.
So here is the 1 through 39. Oh, there's more.
I think I might know the problem here. So I'm working in Excel 2016 here on this computer. And I may not have saved this.
As a previous.
Be compatible with an old version because I use Office 365, Microsoft 365. So if you want to take.
Oh, up one. You're missing one at the top, I think.
Do you want just these?
I'm just like the first three columns, like, yeah, right there. And then cut that out and then put it in a new thing. And then if the board's mean, it'll go, ooh, this action won't work.
All right, and then that way we can look at those things.
And then we can say, you know, this is cool, whatever we want to put.
And you're saying everything town hall, buildings and that stuff on that list is what we want to pick from? Because aren't there, there's.
There's 39 things.
So pick from this.
Paste.
There's no other health and safety and pages? We shouldn't worry about that, right?
No, that's the one. Let's paste. Control V? That's weird.
Why is this?
I'm going to look at mine.
Because Andy, you guys have Office 365 at town offices, right? Why isn't that on this too? Why are we getting like an old version on here? What's up?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Can you find out?
I can, I'll get hold of Stephen.
Because we should have the same version.
Seems like we paved enough.
So the last meeting we had, I brought up a subject of possibly forecasting revenues off of population, et cetera, et cetera. Does that go on the side or we just said we're not going to do it or?
I don't know what, I don't think we didn't want to pursue it. I just think we haven't got there yet.
So, but I like the idea of revenues.
This action won't work on multiple solutions. What does that mean, John? I don't think I've ever seen that.
Neither have I.
If you leave, then you can, you can work up with us.
Oh, we'd have to like do a. Paper? Oh my God.
I'm just saying, it can move us along.
This should work, I would think.
All right, I'm going to leave.
We'll talk about you when you're done.
That's fine, everyone has.
Is it because it's protected maybe, John?
It's not protected.
Oh, it's not protected, okay. That's not it.
It's not protected. See, I protect it, so it's not protected.
That's weird.
And it is. There's other things that are behaving very strange. Why is this staying gray? This selection.
Can't we like get out of it and then go back into it?
Sure.
Maybe that's.
Just close it.
Yeah. And it won't like close.
That's my last ditch effort. Is close it down and start over again.
Because you can tweak those things. Because you get that information from Andy anyways, because you got to scan it, so.
Not responding.
Karen, I can use that number by the weight door if I'm forced.
So nothing?
Nothing.
No. We just need the list.
It is still behaving the same.
See if you can close Excel totally, because you've left it open. Maybe that's, it's like a con or something. Hey, I do this for a living, you know? You try just about everything until you pull your hair out, so.
I feel that. You have a lot of hair left, so.
That's because.
You must be very successful, exactly. That's why you're, that's why you're good at that job.
Okay, can we just open up an Excel spreadsheet? And then Katrina will tell us what the information is. And then we can talk about each one of them and then just list them?
Or do you want to have the thing up there that is the one, the correct one? And then we can write down the ones that we're saying so everyone can see the list? And then once we do that, then we can.
You can't even erase the list now.
Oh, can't even, okay, great. Well, that's why I questioned, all right, let's go.
So, I don't know, can you bring up Excel? And then we can just type in. Hopefully the keyboard doesn't give up. Maybe that's what's stopping us. All right. Andy, I'm going to give you some work.
Is this keyboard?
I am personally, I'm not even using the damn thing. I am personally frustrated with this whole setup in terms of this wireless system that they've got set up here. We need something different that works. This is ridiculous. Those things are not expensive. And if that one's not working, we need something. So we've always had problems with that particular mouse. I don't know about the keyboard, the mouse has been problematic. See what else you can give us.
The mouse has been a little better over here. I thought it was this, really?
Yeah, I thought it was doing great, but it's getting kind of sticky. So like, if we could talk about what those things are? Maybe Katrina, if you can just do the first one and we can kind of put it into a bucket, if you will?
All right, so I printed out the, what was the, it turns out it's the town building, town hall, capital reserve fund. So do you want, do you want to just?
Just like the first one and then John would put it in there? And we can talk about, you know, is it something we want to fund at ARPA? Something we want to fund, something we're not interested at this particular time? We have no way, we're never going to do that, maybe.
So have, have lists of like ARPA, fund or never? Okay.
This is the problem.
I need someone to fix it before I even do that.
I'm typing.
You think you're typing?
Here? No.
Oh, okay.
The keyboard not on?
Yeah, I got a little blue light here that's flashing above the battery symbol.
Is that bad? So do we have a way to charge it?
No, it's batteries.
Oh, it's a battery thing? Right.
Usually Denise has some in her bed, but.
For the tip recorder. She usually has two.
Oh, is it like actual like Duracell batteries?
Yeah.
Wouldn't the fire department have one?
Triple triples?
I can, I can call them maybe.
Fire department probably has.
Two triple A's.
You think what, the fire department?
Yeah, if they're here.
Yeah, I'm sure we can. This is a manageable problem.
Those are probably doubles, but.
I think the triple.
Oh, these are triples, oh, there we go.
Nice, for the win.
How many do we need though?
Two.
Got, we got two. I'll leave this out, cause we'll have to put them in to shut the projector off.
Do you have these problems in Deerfield too?
Yes, very much so.
Oh, well, maybe not. It is all money.
Can you see now? There's a little connect button here in the back that's recessed. Push that.
Not moving.
Okay, it gets worked back to paper.
Uh, I do have a paper printout of that.
Oh wait, yeah, let's see.
Alright, so you get rid, so how about if you?
Yeah, you can just put a thing by it.
Yeah, we just won't be able to see it.
Highlighter, is it, you wanna highlight? A highlighter, so you know.
We have a track board over there.
I have.
Yes!
We're going back to the.
This is why I said let me spend a little money on this. Big fancy thing.
They should be up somewhere there, in the thing next to the track board? Yeah, right in there, yeah, there you go.
You're multiple colors. I wanna remind you, we have another step to go in this meeting that's gonna take some time.
Yeah, I know, and I have to be home before seven o'clock. So I have yet another meeting to go to, so.
That's good.
So.
First thing.
What's first thing?
Do you want me to read it while you're writing down?
Andy's gonna be the scribe.
No, he did not think this is part of his career. And then ARPA?
ARPA.
Alright.
And then.
And later.
And later, yeah, that's a good one. Finland bear.
But don't we have to save for later, or you mean we're gonna think about saving for later? Okay, so it's not on the current budget.
Yeah. So what's the first one? Anybody? I don't know who's first one on the list. Katrina?
Oh.
John?
John has sent me the printout, the actual list from the paint, so do you wanna read it, John, or me too?
It's furnace for the town hall.
Great.
Furnace for the town hall. What is it? Furnace for the town hall.
Furnace for the town hall.
Fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, and that was based on, um.
Which town hall are we speaking of?
The town hall.
V town hall.
The town hall.
There's town municipal buildings and the town hall.
Town hall, historic town.
Don't start.
Paul was in my office yesterday to discuss that.
I'm sure.
Oh my goodness.
So, we have no choice on the furnace, you can't not heat the building or it freezes. So that's gonna be a yay, is that an ARPA?
You can, you can shut it down, we closed ours for the winter.
That's true, but we're actively using it.
Yeah, libraries use it, so.
So it's a yay?
It's a yay with a possible ARPA yay.
I know, so what do you do then?
How about?
Can you, oh, can you put yay and then check ARPA maybe? Or maybe we just write yay or nay and then we go through for, I don't know.
You can put a question mark in ARPA.
There you go.
There you go.
See my family's here.
Yeah, just something short so we know what it is, so ARPA question mark.
Okay.
I'll just.
Alright, next one?
Next one, John?
Is highway addition to the shop, hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, based on an educated guess. Um, it was scaled from some recent construction in town.
Yeah, that was.
And we are currently banging our machines because we're trying to cram them into a space that doesn't fit.
Well, he wants more space, so.
So is that a yay or is that a later?
Based on what else is on the list, I think it's a later.
Okay.
Personally, but that's just me.
Brian, do you agree?
That's just me.
Extra shed is a later, plan?
That, that.
Yeah.
Alright, next.
Okay, what's next? He's not gonna let it.
The what?
Next is furnace for town hall annex.
I, I, I.
That's a, that's a later.
What happened?
The thing is, this is my opinion of course, the thing is, if the furnace starts working, there's nothing they're doing in there, they use this heat, and will just drain the, the pipes.
Okay. Great, later.
And I don't think, yeah, that's a later, I, that, that's just me.
I agree.
That's just me.
Do you agree? So if the town, if the annex stops working, then the annex stops working.
Good.
Drain the pipes, move on.
Yep.
Great.
Next.
I don't know what's to do with the list.
Yeah, I'll be here.
I have a version running on my laptop.
Perfect, okay. Alright, library repeating outside, that is gonna have to happen.
Yep, that's a yay.
So we'll, you'll say in the middle.
How about, how about if I just say, and then you?
No, cause I'm saying, we disagree, right.
Agree or disagree or whatever. Yep.
Okay, furnace for highway annex, that's a different annex, boiler, so that has to be fixed.
Yeah, what's the matter with it?
Excuse me, the library paint is exterior only.
Yep, twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, that's the, the, the outside of fixing the platters and stuff like that, remember, that's, that's.
No, it's fine.
So the highway, there's nothing wrong with the furnace, it's not an emergency we need right now, it is slated for twenty twenty-four, so it's a, it's a maintenance. Anything that's going to be needed, I think it's a yay. No, yay means we have to save for it, what is, later, what does that mean to you?
It's a year or a later, I thought.
Right, like we're not gonna plan for it, but that's twenty twenty-four, so I think it has to be a yay.
Okay. So that's the highway annex furnace?
Correct.
Next.
Twenty twenty-six is a highway salt sand shed.
I think we have to save for it.
Correct, so it's a yay.
Yep, okay, salt shed.
You're in agreement with this, Mr. Brown, right?
Huh?
Are you in agreement with me, can you hear me if I do this? Here, that helps, okay. Okay. The next is the twenty twenty-six fire pump for recycle center. Hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, we have to have some way.
I'm sorry, what is it?
A fire pump for recycle center.
Yeah, it's that whole issue with the pipes, they have to keep replacing certain sections of them?
Right.
But this is the pump, this is the most expensive part.
Yeah.
But it's for safety, right?
So, we need to save for it.
Yep, so it's a yay, it's a fire pump for recycle center.
I'm glad that Andy has good penmanship.
I know, we should have asked that before.
Yeah, that's true, maybe we, maybe.
Maybe it's cause we could read his resume.
Yeah, we could, although, see if his penmanship is on that.
More so.
Alright. Can the camera be, maybe we'll just pretend it's really good. Alright, so, um, the transfer station office furnace, which is twenty forty-one, is eight thousand, I think we have to save for it, but it's not.
Twenty forty-one?
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
So what was that?
Uh, office furnace for transfer station, so TRS.
Ooh, no, no.
Okay, oh no, it's save it now, sorry.
Yeah, it's a yay.
I take it we can't put this on?
No.
He can't get it to work. There's something wrong because you get a different version here.
That's the projector is projecting.
Okay, well I just thought, if we're good, then everybody, you just pick one they don't want, because I think most of these are gonna fly.
This was a furnace, I'm sorry.
Yes, transfer station office furnace.
Yeah.
This is another, um, town hall annex twenty thirty, uh, roof, I think that's a later, cause we don't know what we're doing with the annex.
Yep.
So, roof annex.
Annex for the town, town hall annex roof.
Oh, wait, yeah, so what does it mean, T H A?
Yeah.
T H A is, is that town?
Yes.
Didn't you just replace it?
Yeah, that's why it's thirty, twenty thirty-eight, so we're good. Um, transfer station furnace, recycle center waste oil, twenty twenty-eight, ten thousand, I think that's something we have to do. The furnace for recycle center. So TRS furnace, waste oil, I guess?
Yep.
Trying to make it short for, for Andy. Alright, um, H E S, replace highway department equipment shed, twenty twenty-two, so that has to happen quickly, and that is five thousand dollars.
What is it again?
Replace highway department equipment shed.
What's it for?
It's a very small equipment shed, uh, I've forgotten what piece of equipment he has in it. Um, he doesn't have another place for that piece of equipment, and this is on the verge of falling down.
So that could be an ARPA fund.
Where is it?
At the, at the highway department.
No, I understand that, but where? He's got the annex building and the regular building, where?
This, this is really small, it's like, no, ten by sixteen feet or something.
It's only five thousand dollars.
Where is it though? Where is the?
I don't recall.
Okay, alright.
We can look into it.
I reluctantly agree.
For ARPA?
Okay.
So, um, highway department equipment shed, under ARPA, five thousand.
Arbor.
Arbor, I'm back.
Later.
One over to the left, Mr. Brown.
One more over, please. There you go.
I thought you guys were just having a word with the board.
That's, that's fine.
Next.
Okay, um, H S H roof for new highway spreader hangers. And that's in twenty twenty-five, seventy-five hundred, so, see what's the one we need, so it's on the yay.
Yay list.
We, we. That's fine.
Highway shed.
Way sheds, there we go.
Under yay, and then highway department spreader. Cause you can do like, short, there's, we can just figure out what it is.
You know, we, we could have done this, just written the number next to it.
We could.
And save some a lot of time, but then we would know.
But I enjoy penmanship though.
Alright, oh my goodness.
Next.
Should have brought the phone so we could take a picture of it, no, we're done.
Oh.
H D A roof for highway annex for twenty twenty-eight, twenty-five thousand. Which H D A?
Let's.
Our department annex.
Okay, roof for the highway.
Oh, okay.
So, you have to.
So H W A roof.
So I would say yay, yeah.
Yep. H W A roof.
Yep.
Next.
H F T, highway fuel pump tank roof and tub, twenty thirty-six, twenty thousand.
Is that the little thing next to the?
Uh, that's, that's the, um, that's the tub that the tank is in, um, for leaks, plus the roof over it.
So it's a yay.
And it's actually the entire thing, so that includes the tank, so you could say, well, the tank is in a building and.
Okay.
But it's a whole thing.
It's far enough away.
So, um, highway fuel pump.
Roof. H W.
Well, oh, yeah, so tank roof and tub, so.
Tank.
H F T.
H F T.
Um, fuel pump tank roof and tub.
He's got it, that's.
Alright, good enough.
Figure it out.
Just started small at the top.
That's okay, I know, right? Maybe we'll just start saying no more, cause we got lots of space there. P S C A C, police department replacement system, twenty twenty-two, that's twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty, that might.
That's ARPA.
Need to ARPA, over.
That's ARPA.
Cause A C?
Yep.
Not one, a bunch of grumpy glues actors.
Wait, do you have grumpy ones now?
No, because they need to be cool.
Alright.
Alright, and then the next one's ARPA for P S C fire department may ventilation system?
Yeah. Next.
Um, P S C energy use improvements, that's a guess?
Uh, sorry, that's an old printout.
Oh, okay, so don't worry.
Divided into two items, the first, both of them are insulation, the first is to insulate an air seal of the fire department ceiling.
Okay.
Um, and the maximum cost of that is eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Okay.
Um, and the second one is to insulate the police department roof, uh, that's with foam, um, actually insulated the roof. Uh, and that's a maximum cost of forty-nine thousand five hundred.
Can we put that in the possible ARPA file, because if we're going to do it, the sooner we do it, the faster we save money?
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
And then we can move it if have to be, so insulation of P S C. In ARPA.
Do you need it in two parts, or?
ARPA, um.
I've got it in two parts.
Yeah, well, yeah, so, I think P S C insulation.
P S C insulation, which will cover both.
And the total of that, we, we don't figure out, okay. Then we have the P S C fire suppression system for, in twenty twenty-five, for two hundred and eighty-eight thousand?
And that number is, um, just based on what it was back in two thousand and ten.
Right.
Um, and the fire chief has been unable to find any.
Grants.
Documentation that showed where that number came from.
So we have no idea, this is kind of a random number, and I wonder if that's something that we'd.
I, I would like to put it in later, cause it needs more research.
Okay, and maybe that's something we could look at.
When, when you say later, what does that mean?
That means, I don't, we don't have enough money to fund it right now, but it also needs more research, so I think it needs to be put off, and we need to figure it out when we have more information.
The fire chief is actively trying to get an upper.
So then should it be yay then?
Well, I'm already anticipating the yays, we don't have enough money off for all the yays as it is.
So think about possible funding, so is that something you'd wanna think about for the, um, next bout of ARPA? Cause it seems like that would take all the money.
Yeah, well, that's, I need more information to make any decisions, so.
Mr. Brown, how do you feel about the fire suppression system for P S C, what should you think?
About what?
What do you think the category should be for the fire suppression system for the P, for here? Do you wanna put it in yay, ARPA, or later, or nay, I guess?
Really don't have a thought on it right now.
What's your opinion?
I'm, I'm torn between putting it under ARPA to look into, or yay. Because I, I don't wanna not save for it, but I agree with Mr. Bugby that it's just we, I don't know how a number that big is going to be part of this estimate, so.
I think the other part of that is that, that number was based on a standard installation, and talking with Scott, he has some real concerns about whether you can do a standard insulation here uh, because of the legs that the building sits on.
Oh.
So maybe we have to later and then figure that out and then add it next year, is that what we're thinking?
That's why I'm thinking later, because it needs more research, so that's just me.
And then that's a problem for those crazy flood people next year?
You're you're one of those crazy select people.
I do that, okay, all right. Okay.
So where's later?
Later doesn't mean we don't care, it just means we have to figure out how to make money.
Yeah, sure.
How to make money? I'll carry that bucket.
Yeah. You're carrying the bucket.
Next.
Not making sure that the fire department has their own suppression system makes me sad. Okay, so PSC fire department bunk rooms, twenty twenty five thirty, I think that should be ARPA.
Okay, sounds good.
Especially because we're gonna meet them do very comfortable if they have a crisis.
Where are they in a crisis?
We are living crisis to crisis.
Next.
PSC generator replacement, twenty thirty, sixty thousand dollars, you have to have a working generator, so I think that's a yay.
That's that's a yay.
Not an emergency.
Well, it doesn't work.
Well, absolutely.
Next.
PSC roof replacement for twenty thirty three, hundred and twenty thousand, you have to do that, so yes, PSC roof.
Next.
HSM deck and ramp replacement, twenty twenty two, five thousand dollars.
Saving safety issues.
Absolutely.
It's a yay, could be in ARPA, though.
Well, should we put it in ARPA and then we can always say, you know what, that comes out of a.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, so that is HSM.
Yes. Historical society museum.
Ramp.
Ramp, yep, deck and ramp.
Ramp and deck. Okay, next.
Um, CSS cemetery shed expand or add twenty twenty two, five thousand.
What's the matter with it? Expand it for what reason?
They have a problem fitting up plywood in plywood they use when they um,
Oh.
have a burial.
Got it.
And so that and that price was just a placeholder of this is the cost for a shed that would work better than what they have now.
So yay.
Cemetery shed?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you not agree?
I'm not.
You're gonna put five thousand in later?
I think we should keep it later, but I I'm seeing that there's more, I don't see that as a bit high priority at this particular time. You know, it's inconvenient, but some of these other things are gonna be.
Well, can't we just change the year?
Well, the other thing is you you have the ability to say, yes, we're gonna do it, but we're not gonna do it until.
Right.
Twenty thirty or.
Right, all right.
All right, that's fine.
Whatever. It's it's. Anything that comes before twenty twenty nine.
Doesn't affect.
Moving it around doesn't mean anything.
So so cemetery shed for yay.
Under.
But do you want to say it's not? I mean, it's listed as this year.
No, it's not this year.
It's definitely not ARPA.
All right.
But, you know, we should have the people that have to deal with it because there's probably a reason that it's on here, and it's probably really frustrating.
I acknowledge that, but.
TH pre-construction rehab cost.
What is it?
Town hall.
This is this is the town hall rehabilitation.
Yep.
And there's several pieces to it. The pre-construction rehabilitation cost came from the previous architect. Most of those figures. And that's sixty two thousand dollars.
So I have a question, we're looking at a bunch of town hall rehab things, are those things that would be and we would put all together and then they would be part of a um, bond when we're ready? And we know what we're doing with them? Could that be later, oh, sorry?
I think that's more of a, we're gonna talk in terms of how we fund some of these things?
Yeah.
Like these yays, how how are we funding some of these particular things?
Well, that's it, you have to figure.
Yep.
The plan, but my question is, for this particular one, that's a pretty obvious one. This is twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
Are we putting more than half a million dollars on the list right now for building? Or is that something that we would have to decide and bond? Because right now our town hall, our town municipal building is costing us.
Yes.
Sixty thousand dollars a year, and the library has definite needs right away, the town hall is not in need right this second. So can that go on later?
Great.
All four of them, so the prehab, the pre-construction, the town rehab, and town rehab.
And that gets into that issue that we talked about on Monday in terms of what do we do for that, because that's a question to be answered by us as well, so.
Correct.
Because it doesn't seem like it's the, Mr. Brown was a prig with the desk, but the the whole thing in terms of we're putting money to the building and they're not doing anything with the major systems inside.
Right.
So they're not dealing with the window issue, they're not dealing with the electrical issue, they're not dealing with the plumbing issue. Those have to be dealt with, they're just really dealing with, you know, space rearrangement and cosmetic stuff and stuff like that, so.
But wouldn't that be a bond issue?
What's the total price of that piece of paper?
More than we have.
Oh, well, the total price is different, but it is.
Roughly. Three million something, isn't it?
I don't, this is just for twenty twenty.
John can tell us.
Four and a quarter million.
Four and a quarter million, how much? Four and a quarter million.
Today's cost.
So some things have to be a bond that we borrow to pay later.
Yeah, which it could be.
I don't see why the town hall wouldn't be.
Well, it might might not, but the thing is also you want to do, just based on the conversation Chris Christian Katrina and I had. I think this particular group needs to explore, if we were to build them a new building and get them out of that building, the libraries per se.
Correct.
Take down the part that's not the historic front part and just build on that particular structure, not in the wetlands. How, what would that be? So that's something that I think we need to explore because before we stick another about four hundred thousand plus all the expenses for all those upgrades of the systems.
I agree.
That's like a waste of money, that's just like a total waste of money.
But we would have to then pass a new building, a library.
But you're talking about, I'm sorry, you're talking about a new building?
A bill, a new building. One that fits their needs.
On that site?
Well, someplace, someplace there.
Well, I know, but.
Not in the same place.
You know, you have to, if you if you just go back a few years, maybe maybe eight, I don't know, something like that, they tried a new building.
But it was a expensive fancy one.
Yeah, so we're thinking something like the daily building.
And I think that if we explain that the cost of repairing this.
I know, but I can hear the echoes, what's wrong with the library we have?
Then we explain that in order to make it safe and functioning.
I think you're gonna have a rough sell, but okay, that's that's.
I don't think it's ever easy to sell spending money.
Huh?
It's definitely never easy to sell spending money.
Because because if you think about it, the costs are them doing whatever they want to do right at the moment with their little addition and all their stuff, which doesn't even deal with the electrical system and all of those stuff, is a million dollars.
Yeah.
And they have, what, half a million dollars right now?
Right.
And if the town was to add something onto that, and you get a building that's a million dollars and gives them whatever they want.
It would be probably more.
Because at some point, that building has to be addressed in terms of the electrical system and all those all those things.
I I'm just, I'm just saying, it's a, this is this is Lee, it's a historical building.
But it but only will keep the historical part, it's just that everything after it isn't historical and it's a mess. So if you, what you're saying is you keep the historical part and you use that for something. And maybe what we're saying is we use some of these buildings for town offices again.
John, you had some. Put a dollar sign with it and see what you can do.
Yeah.
John, you have something you wanted to say? No?
We're still on town hall rehab, though.
Yes, which I think needs to be later right now because I don't see how we're gonna fund that.
Okay.
And I don't see the direct need where we have actual needs that have to get taken care of right now.
So later on town hall rehab?
Yeah.
On the four, there's four of them, I think.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of them.
So put town hall rehab times four. Next.
TCS town center site work, what is?
That's the same thing, I think.
Oh, for the library? Or that's to get, oh, that 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 whole area.
That's the parking, the septic, the water, yeah, it's all this stuff, that's kind of that thing as well, so maybe it's times five or something.
Uh, there's three phases here, so you want to all save a little later.
Okay. Next.
The only concern I have is that.
And when you're saying later, you are wanting to take this cost out right now.
I think we're saying we don't know how to fund it.
X.
I think what I'm saying is it's gonna have to be a bond as opposed to we're saving for it, but maybe we should put something towards all of these things so that we have something.
We have a category of not funded or no funding plan.
There you go.
Which is a category of can also mean, yes, it's still on the list.
Yes.
But we have no idea where the money's coming from.
That one, so we don't have that on our awesome checkboard, but you can definitely put that on your awesome computer.
I think John's updating as we go along.
Trying to keep up with that.
Perfect.
So so all of the town hall costs will make it X.
I think literally everything on the later would be what you're saying, what we're saying is we don't know how to pay for it right now. It's not that any of those we don't believe in, we just don't know what to do, how to pay for them.
You're not taking it off the list.
Correct, there's some things we absolutely have to do, those other things, well, I don't know, we absolutely have to do five expression too, so.
All right, next.
All right, so that was all a bunch of site work, we talked about that. Uh, TOB town office building from CRF, that's a million dollars, so what is that?
What is that?
What does that mean? And then there's another one from bond, is that what we built in one?
So this was a um, a placeholder, plain guess, of what would an office building cost?
Oh.
And the number was one and a half million dollars.
Right, okay.
And that was then divided into two pieces because it was recognized that right now you're paying sixty thousand dollars a year for the office building. When you build a new building, that cost goes away. So the idea was that um, what would a bond be that would end up having the same annual cost as what you're paying now in the lease cost?
Okay.
And that's the bond piece that's listed there, so the first part of it is nine hundred and seventy eight thousand from the capital reserve fund. And the second piece is five hundred and twenty two thousand from the bond. When you take the five hundred and twenty two thousand, you bring the cost forward to twenty twenty nine. And then look up what we have for an expected bond rate then. You end up with bond payments that are the same as what you would have been paying.
So this is the challenge, we we're not planning on building two new buildings because we have so many historic buildings no one wants to get rid of. So what we're saying now is it's possible that we would want to build a new library and then use these other buildings that we're gonna have to rehab for town offices, is that correct?
What I was thinking is you built a new library building to meet their needs.
Right.
When they're out of the current structure, you tear down everything behind the old building.
All right.
And then put in something new that's not in the.
So that would be part of this town office building plan?
That would be an expense as well.
Okay.
I think it needs to go into later because it needs needs more.
Not funded, basically, yeah.
So may or later.
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 Which is translating for John to not funded.
This is town office building.
We just have to make sure we're saving.
All right.
Okay, TRS, replace sprinkler piping, that has to happen, right?
The transfer station.
Yep.
Yep, that's my, I'm on an ARPA thing for that.
Yeah, I agree.
ARPA.
Yep.
Maybe ARPA, phase two or something.
Yeah, and I think that's, we have a couple of phase twos, we'll have to think about that.
Next.
Um, PSC AC gym number six replaced compressor, that's right away.
What is it?
PSC.
That's this building, the compressor that services the gym?
Yep.
Oh, it's a heat and cooling thing?
Yeah, so can we, it's twenty four hundred dollars.
Twenty four hundred dollars.
Is that ARPA?
Okay, that's an ARPA.
So compressor, I guess. PSC compressor.
Comp or something. Next.
Um, transportation replaced tool shed roof, that's twenty twenty three, seven thousand seven hundred. So that's yay.
This is this is tool shed.
Yep, oh, TS is tool shed?
TS dash is tool shed.
Sorry, apologize.
So there's two items there for the tool shed, replace the roof and paint.
And this is the tool shed that we are currently using and we have to continue to, or is that, are we tucking the hobo shed?
No.
No.
Yes, what do you commonly call the hobo shed?
Commonly called the hobo shed.
I thought you said transfer station.
No, I I got it wrong, I said TST because it says TS. It's tool shed.
This is. Anything?
So the.
What's the next step to this process?
Seeing how much all these things add up to.
In order to save our tran, our tool shed, it here, the only costs I have of any sort are twenty five thousand and seven thousand seven hundred. So we have to say is our, is saving that hobo shed tool shed something we're going to fund at twenty three, uh, sorry, thirty three thousand dollars.
Uh, the the twenty five thousand that's listed for the um, lead paint.
Yep.
Was a plain guess.
Okay.
And that was based on um, hiring a contractor to do it.
Okay, so it's a lower number because we have our staff.
Recently, Steve has been talking about doing it.
Okay.
With town personnel.
At the same time.
We talked about taking a class for it.
Right, so maybe more like ten, maybe?
And so he's still gonna have costs, but they're not gonna be twenty five thousand.
Right.
He was talking about doing it when he does the library, because it's the same thing.
Right.
So I think we need some more information about that one.
But we should put in yay.
Yeah.
Tool shed is what you're saying, it's worth saving and we're fixing it, okay.
Post about, you had a question?
Well, I, it just seems to me, okay, so here we are, we're five people sitting in here saying, yeah, well, we'll build a new library.
I didn't say that, I didn't say that.
What about, what about the users, shouldn't they be involved somewhere in here? If we, if rather than split it up by, in other words, if we took the list and said, this is the town hall stuff, this is the library stuff.
Right.
This is the the uh, transfer station stuff. And then bring those people in one at a time and go through it with them.
That's how we got here, that's how we got all this information.
I I'm not sure that's how we got here, maybe that's how you got here. I don't remember we going through there and talking about a new library with the with the trustees.
That's true.
I don't remember.
Everything else we talked about with.
I don't remember, I don't remember having having any real, any kind of a dialogue with the owners of of this.
That's what they came in and they met with us and they went through with us.
Yeah, well, the thing is, in terms of the yays, already we can't afford all those yays. So we have to find out how much it is, and then we have to cull down in terms of what we're gonna pursue.
We've taken.
One of those things could be the library.
Right.
Could not.
Well, wouldn't it be nice to know now if they said, if the trustees came in and said, no, we're we're not gonna sign up for that? I mean, you're off to a bad start.
Correct, and then we just change because all those things are over there, then all those things get changed, and then we change to the town hall, and then the library has to deal, we have to deal with the challenges with the library.
Because I don't want to start exploring something like that with the library when when we get done this particular part of this and say, hey, there's no way we can afford it.
Right.
Because then we wasted our time, so I think we need to figure out what we can afford and what we can't. If one of those is building the new library, possibly, then let's have the conversation with them, definitely we have to have the conversation.
But the last I spoke to the library, they did say that they would prefer to just do the addition and.
Yeah.
Be done. So it will be a challenge.
I mean, we still got to wrestle with other proposals that are gonna be made for a new town hall, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, it's up there too, so, yeah.
I think what we're trying to say is we have to come up with numbers and we have to start saving money. So we also have to realize that some of these things will be bonds. So I think what what I feel like we're saying is, these are things that we just have a responsibility to, we have to pay for and do, and then these big ticket items, we really need to figure out how we're going to pay for them and which things are going to be bonds that we ask for and when do we start asking for them? Is that, am I off base?
No, I'm good, I have six minutes before I have to leave.
All right, so let's just finish up because then we can vote really quickly on some of the ARPA stuff.
So we're not gonna do another non-public?
You two can, I have to leave, if you two want to do that.
Well, no, you two could have done it last night.
No, we wanted, we wanted to include you, but.
I I think it's best if the three of us can get together sometime and talk about.
Okay.
So we could do it really quickly if we just talk, the next thing is library replacement of an AC, we can put that on to later, I guess, if we're talking about this confusion stuff.
Library AC?
Yeah, and then replace outside stairway for town hall. Um, that's probably pretty necessary, but we don't know what to plan.
Well, if nobody's going upstairs, it's blocked off.
It's outside stairway.
Yeah, so why do you need to do anything with it now?
Great, so that can go for later. So town hall stairway. Okay, so we're done there.
Later.
You may need to take it down.
Somebody going to take a picture of that?
That's true.
Well, it's blocked off now.
Because you know it's going to be erased by tomorrow.
Okay, so are there things we can?
What's next?
Yeah, okay.
Can we highlight the things that are most important here and see if we have enough money to get the ARPA done so we can get those guessed right now? Like the vent, that's what, six, sixty?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
So maybe we can put a number next to it. Well, that's what we're going to do right now, and we can do it in like two minutes.
I would think the no list is shorter, so is there something up there we're going to say no to?
Or that's for later, you mean? So ARPA second, we were saying some things were ARPA next, like later. Like the insulation, PSC, that can be ARPA later.
PSC is.
Now.
The third one down, I think that's AC, you got to do that.
Right, with PD, yeah.
Yep, so let's do that. Town hall furnace you got to do, so let's do that one. That's top one.
Yep, you're going to add those up first, John?
I have, I have a list of the ARPA listed, but I don't have the first few.
Oh.
Okay, so PSC then?
So, that first item?
Town hall furnace. Yep.
And then AC.
PSC AC.
Wanted that to be ARPA.
Yep.
Right away, ARPA.
PSC, what, what is that?
AC for the PD.
Yep, no, 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 the next one down, PSC.
Fire department vent, that's a yes.
That's a yes.
So what are we at, dollar wise?
I've got the PSC AC, there's ARPA. Um, what was the shed?
Uh, I don't think we need to do that.
The highway shed was late, um.
A very small highway shed, I believe was like five thousand dollars.
So if we have enough money, we can talk, but let's right now see where we're at with those three things out of the one eighty-six.
PSC insulation, I would say yes. Bunks, yes.
Okay, but I think we've just run out of money then.
No, not yet, not yet, I would think.
Let's let John add it up.
Yep.
The ARPA that I have, and I don't have that shed in here
Yep.
is two hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars.
What, it's just those five things?
Yes, but that's the nominal cost.
Hmm.
Um, and those are spread out, you know, we can go and change the years to match ARPA.
We're just talking about, oh, I see, yeah, we just need the price for right now.
We've got a hundred and eighty-four, six nineteen
Right.
left right now.
So.
But, so the vent is sixty-seven, AC is twenty, the furnace is fourteen, insulation is thirty, and bunks are thirty. That should be about the hundred and eighties. That's sixty, one twenty-seven, one forty-seven, one sixty-one. That's what I'm coming up with, those five things.
So then we can add in the, um, shed for five thousand and what's the P, how much was the PSC compressor?
The compressor? Oh, the pump was way expensive. You can't afford that.
No, we can't. But that can be for next time.
Sprinklers.
Oh, and the, and the ramp needs to be on there.
Oh, yeah, ramp.
So that's the challenge. So now we still have how much?
I don't think you got too much left.
Great, so can we just vote right now to have all those things paid for with ARPA money?
If John can give us a total.
It's still under what we have.
Some new occurrences because, or change the dates of these. So we want all these in this year.
And then we don't have to spend it down to the penny. We just have to.
Well, as long as those total less than what we've got left.
And we could always have the AC, um, because it doesn't need to be done right now as the buffer for this ARPA or next ARPA if we overspent.
Okay, because they don't need AC right now.
Correct, so we could always say, well, it'll just be next year with a new next ARPA check or it could be now.
Okay.
And then those things can come off of this sheet.
Yep.
Out of expenses, and we can move on. And then we have some big decisions to make about buildings still, which is kind of always a problem.
I have to go.
Okay. Forgot what we were talking about, but to know what your opinion is.
Still at two hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Oh, that's not good.
Of ARPA.
And we have one eighty-seven, so.
Okay, so it's too much.
Take the AC off.
Yep.
So that's two something.